The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 5:00 PM, Monday, the 19th of July, 2021. First thing that I'd like to do is thank everyone for being here, attending tonight, these hot summer nights, and it was great days at the fair, so we'll move forward here with a regular council meeting. First thing we're going to do is approve the minutes of the regular meeting and Strategic Planning and Priorities Meeting held June 28, 2021. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll be happy to make the motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning and priorities meeting held on June the 28th, 2021 be approved.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Any additions to the agenda? Ms. Warren?
Your worship, there's no additions from the administration tonight.
Counsel? Seeing none, move forward. There are no public hearings and notices. There are under delegations of proclamations, we have one proclamation that we're going to make. It is for Food Day Canada. Whereas Food Day Canada is a national celebration of our farmers, fishers, food producers, chefs, researchers, and home cooks, and everyone who helps us enjoy Canadian homegrown food. Whereas it is a time for all Weyburn residents and Canadians to share their food stories and honor those who have set our tables so very well. Whereas the city of Weyburn will be joining other organizations and people across Canada to celebrate the food that unites us from coast to coast to coast. Whereas Weyburn residents are encouraged to eat meals that highlight Canada's diverse and rich culinary culture using Canadian growth ingredients and to make their own meals at home or visit a Food Day Canada-inspired restaurant. Whereas Weyburn residents are encouraged to support the local food producers in every way possible and amplify their stories by participating in the social media celebration, posting images and menus with the hashtag #FoodDayCanada. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the city of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim July 31st, 2021, Food Day Canada in the city of Weyburn. So, moving forward with that, we have a delegation. We have the Youth Council, if you would please. Today, with us are members of the Youth Council, Greg Weens, Grace Labatt, Dalton Molner. Unable to be here today is Jalen Hopstein and Grayson Kepnall. And we welcome them today to share a message about the past year as well as their support for an important cause supported by our city council early this year. Greg, if you would, please.
Youth Council is an amazing program that has allowed us to learn so much this year. We have all taken away different experiences and enjoyed all the opportunities that Youth Council gave us. This year, we spent most of our time learning in Zoom meetings as we could not hold any events because of COVID. One of the highlights of the year was being able to talk to our MLA, Dustin Duncan, and our MP, Robert Kitchen. We were able to learn about their jobs and daily tasks as well as why they went into politics. We also learned more about processes and procedures in the municipal, provincial, and federal governments. Youth Council's main focus this year is mental health. We learned more about mental health and how we can help others in our community. We have enjoyed being a voice for the youth of Weyburn. The Youth Council would also like to thank the city of Weyburn and the city council for the opportunities the Youth Council has given us. We would also like to say a big thank you to Donnette Richter, Paige Tenbolt, and councillor Jeff Richards, who have provided this guidance throughout this year. Youth Council has been an opportunity we will never forget, and we cannot express enough gratitude for all the help and support we have received. The Youth Council would like to voice its support for a motion passed by Weyburn City Council in May on a national suicide prevention hotline in Canada. The request came from our MP, Mr. Robert Kitchen, for the city of Weyburn's support for a hotline which would help remove critical barriers for those seeking immediate help during a crisis. The rate of suicide continues to rise, and mental health is an important issue for us as youth. As Mr. Kitchen said in his initial proposal, "As elected officials and as leaders, Canadians are counting on all of us to make a difference." Therefore, we as the Weyburn Youth Council stand with our city council and Member of Parliament and endorse this 988 crisis hotline initiative. Finally, we would like to thank or remind Weyburn students that applications are open for the 2021-2022 Weyburn Youth Council session, which runs this upcoming school year. Deadline to apply is September 10th, and the forms can be found on the city of Weyburn website. We are excited to see what the next Youth Council is able to accomplish for our community.
Thank you, guys, and I would like to say, counsel, thanks for your participation and dedication to our program. This is one of the programs that we, some of us members from this council, helped get started last council. We'd like to wish the graduating students, Greg Weens, Grace Labatt, and Jalen Hopstein, great success in their future endeavors as they will be moving on. So, thank you again for all your work that you did with the Youth Council, and we look forward to working with the next Youth Council. Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I just want to personally reach out to Youth Council and say thank you for your hard work. I've had the pleasure, it's my pleasure, you guys got to put up with me for the last year, but I will, I just want everybody to know that this is not a, this is not a fun, lighthearted thing that they do. In fact, when we had, I had spoken to our MP, Robert Kitchen, in advance of the meeting that they had with him, and I said to him, "You know, I don't think you're going to get a free ride with these guys." And I will, I will say this to you. He said to me afterwards, "Wow, did I not get a free ride with these guys." So, the questions that they asked were hard and they were real, and so to you guys, I appreciate that, and I hope that some of your peers coming up behind you are just as eager to do the good work that you guys have done over the last year, and good luck in the future. Those of you that are leaving, those that are coming back, harder work next year.
Good job. There are no reports of the standing committee, but consenting agenda. We have the fire department report, the water treatment plant report, the public works report, and the building report. All of these can be seen on the city website. Do I have a motion to accept?
Yes, your worship, I have a motion that the following items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented, the fire department, the water treatment plant report, public works, and the billing report.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any questions? Ms. Van Betche?
Jen, I just have one question on the water treatment plant, the repainting of that face, I'm guessing is what's happening. Is that under warranty?
So, we were unable to prove exactly why it failed, so it is a cost share between us, the paint company, and the contractor that did the work, so it is split three ways to repair it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
How did we have anything to do with the failure of the paint?
It was just the way it was outlined in the contract, based on the prep requirements and how we accepted that, and so we could have continued to go down the road to try and prove the failure, but there was no way for us without investing an extensive amount of money to get possibly an inconclusive answer, so we chose to just split the costs three ways to get it done and to not continue spending our own money and consultant money to try and prove what the, exactly how it failed. So, that was the reason that we chose to split the costs three ways.
And this is going to be completed when?
So, the original paint that was proposed for it, they can no longer get just due to stock issues due to COVID, so they have currently sent a different paint thing which we're reviewing and sampling, but it is supposed to be done by the end of summer, so.
Ms. Van Betche?
No, I just say, I think, Jen, that sounds like a very good compromise regardless. It's going to be completed and at least it's cost shared rather than us bearing the whole full cost.
Any other question? Okay, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, accounts payable, if you would please.
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,929,135.40 from June 25th to July 15th, 2021 be approved. These purchases include quick pays in the amount of $174,158.5, accounts payable in the amount of $1,339,202.39, direct withdrawals in the amount of $411,783.71, and debit card transactions in the amount of $3,998.45.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Concrete crushing, RFP. Jen, would?
Yes, thank you. So, this report is for concrete crushing, so the city of Weyburn has an allocated budget of $100,000 for concrete crushing at our landfill. The city of Weyburn landfill has a large stockpile of concrete and has not crushed in approximately 25 years. The byproduct will be used internally for base and fill by the public works department. So, on June 10th, the tender was posted on SAS Tenders and the city of Weyburn website. The competition was prepared to allow bidders to provide a price per metric ton for material with the option of various sizes of product, and then a discount structure based on the volume of the contract term. So, quotations were to be received by the city of Weyburn by June 30th at 12:00 PM. A total of three proposals were received, and the results of the proposals are as follows. So, Jamie Crushing, they offered just one option. ABS Excavating offered three into the larger, and then as well as BCE Earthworks, they offered across the board. So, based on a full bid assessment, the proposal by BCE Earthworks for $7 per ton for two-inch minus meets the operational requirements as outlined by the city, and so that would be based on the 15,000 tons. And so, it is recommended that the 2021 concrete crushing contract be awarded to BCE Earthworks for $7 per ton for two-inch minus as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do I have a motion, please?
Thanks for the information, Jennifer. I'm prepared to make a motion that the 2021 concrete crushing contract be awarded to BCE Earthworks for $7 per ton for two-inch minus as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question? I have one question, Jen, for you. With this one, are they going to be running this stuff through the metal to pull metal out when they're crushing it? We don't want to end up in the same situation as we had in the past where there's metal in the roads and metal used and is coming through.
Yeah, no, that's stipulated in the RFP, that it has to be clean fill for us to use in the end, and they will do separation, and that's part of their whole setup that they come in and do.
Okay. Any other questions? No? So, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Introduction by law. Bylaw 2021-3431, bylaw amendment for the cannabis retail store. Janine?
Okay, so there's a zoning bylaw amendment application. Council previously saw this back on June 14th, and it's coming back for second reading. It was submitted by Premier Building Solutions on behalf of Masterbuilt Lodging. They're requesting that a cannabis retail store be added to the highway commercial zone as a discretionary use. This would be to facilitate the development of a cannabis retail store in the new three-unit commercial building that is being constructed at 84 Grace Street, which is right beside the microtel. Council gave first reading at the regular council meeting on June 14th, 2021. Public notices for the public hearing to occur today were posted in the July 7th and 14th editions of the Weyburn Review, as well as at City Hall and on the city website as per the city's public notice policy. Additionally, notices were mailed to all registered owners with property in the highway commercial zone, since that's what's being amended in this application. Masterbuilt Lodging is in the process of constructing a new three-unit commercial building, and they're looking to lease one of the units as a cannabis retail store. It's currently zoned highway commercial in zoning by law, which doesn't allow for cannabis retail stores. They're being, they're requesting that it be added as a discretionary use, and they have submitted all the required documentation, including site plan, building floor plans, renderings, to see what the building will look like and where the cannabis retail store will be located. So, you can see the overall site plan there, and green is where the unit will, where the cannabis retail store would be proposed. And then there is a detailed building floor plan of where it will be, and a rendering of what the building will look like. So, the highway commercial zone is designed for uses serving the traveling public or uses requiring a high level of accessibility. Highway commercial zoned lands are typically located adjacent to the major highways, with majority being located on controlled access roads. The zone allows for a variety of uses that are considered to be appropriate uses along major highways. Currently allows for uses similar to a cannabis retail store, such as retail stores and liquor stores. And I've included the whole list of uses that are currently permitted or discretionary. Currently, cannabis retail stores are discretionary uses in the light industrial, major arterial commercial, and the central business district zones. If zoning by law 2021-3431 is approved, any proposed cannabis retail store in the highway commercial zone will have to meet the requirements of Section 5.3.9 cannabis retail stores, which include the following: they require a development permit, they shall comply with all federal and provincial acts and regulations, it's under the authority of the SLGA, drive-through service is currently prohibited, they shall comply with all security requirements of SLGA, all products shall be stored on-site and shall be secured and protected from theft, and there shall be a 200-meter radius from any other approved cannabis retail store, any elementary school or high school, any nursery school or commercial daycare center, and any social service home or halfway house. I've included a map of the zoning by law. All the areas in that darker blue are highway commercial lands, and there's a star indicating the current property that cannabis retail store would be proposed on, and then an inlay of the property as well. The official community plan, the properties zoned highway commercial are also designated highway commercial in the OCP. I've provided a summary of the land use designation and the applicable policies. Highway commercial properties are generally located adjacent to Highway 35, 39, and 13. Uses that typically exist within the highway commercial lands include convenience establishments, gas stations, vehicle washes, vehicle sales, restaurants, storage, vehicle repair shops, animal hospitals, and other uses for the traveling public. Additionally, they're, they are used for businesses which require or strongly benefit from highway access, which may include automotive dealerships, motels, strip malls, service stations, restaurants, and food stores. The proposed bylaw amendment is consistent with the official community plan, as cannabis retail stores are a commercial business which would benefit from highway access, and the proposal is consistent with the applicable policies of the official community plan. So, staff have consulted with Weyburn District Planning Commission in regards to the proposed bylaw amendment on June 25th, and no concerns were expressed by the commission, and a letter has been attached. So, council has a few options. You can hold a public hearing at this meeting and give second and third reading to the bylaw, being a bylaw to amend the highway commercial zone by adding cannabis retail store as a discretionary use, or that council refuses to give second reading to the proposed bylaw and direct administration to advise the applicant of the refusal, and those reasons would have to be provided at this meeting. So, the staff recommendation would be that council holds the public hearing and conducts second and third reading to bylaw 2021-3431 to amend the highway commercial zone to allow for a cannabis retail store as a discretionary use, since this request is consistent with the official community plan and the zoning by law.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2021-3431, the bylaw to amend zoning by law 2020-3412, for the purpose of adding cannabis retail store as a discretionary use to the highway commercial zone be read a second time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Your worship, there has to be a public hearing before you guys can give them second reading for this bylaw.
Right, so, and with that, I declare the, I'd open and invite any parties wishing to speak regarding the bylaw, and may do so at that point in time. If anybody, is anybody here that wants to speak to it? Seeing none, then we move forward, all in favor of this?
I should read it again.
Oh, yeah, read it again.
Worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw 2021-3431, the bylaw to amend zoning by law 2020-3412, for the purpose of adding cannabis retail store as a discretionary use to the highway commercial zone be read a second time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
I missed it here. There was one written submission that has been received on this. Do you have that written submission?
I believe it was in the council package.
Onto there, on that, and did the council have anything to say about that?
Your worship, I do, if you have a moment, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Janine, sorry to catch you off guard. In regards to that submission, you as administration, you guys work with every potential business owner that comes through and has a business idea, and you try and find the most appropriate place for them within the city, correct?
That is correct.
So, if they were to try and go to another area of the city that maybe wasn't quite suited for that particular business, you'd direct them other places, right?
Yes, we try to work with them to find another location that would be appropriate for their use, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Jenney?
Janine, just as a follow-up to Laura's question, so, I mean, we can comfortably say that we haven't refused any application based on this bylaw and not previously been amended?
I hadn't received any other applications formally, no.
Perfect, thank you.
Seeing none, then I'll declare this, public hearing can be declared closed, and then with that, yeah, no, but we're going to declare the, the, the public hearing closed, and so then we'll vote on the motion, all in favor? Carried unanimously. I need a motion to have a third reading, please.
Thank you, your worship. That bylaw 2021-3431, a bylaw to amend zoning by law 2020-3412, for the purpose of adding cannabis retail store as a discretionary use to the highway commercial zone, be read a third time and passed.
Worship, I will second that motion.
Any dissent on this? All in favor, that be read third time, carried unanimously. Moving forward, third reading?
Your worship, I believe that was third reading.
Okay, I, I apologize. I thought we had to have a, what do you call it, a vote on whether we were going to allow a third reading this one. All right, so, okay, go ahead. Then, so then it's passed unanimously, good. Moving forward, our next one. No unfinished business, new business. Urban Highway Connector Program, Janine?
That'll be myself.
Yours? Okay, Jennifer, pardon.
So, this is for the Urban Highway Connector Program, an expression of interest. So, the city of Weyburn is providing an expression of interest for the Urban Highway Connector Program through the province of Saskatchewan. The UHCP promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods through Saskatchewan cities. It also provides an open and consistent framework to support the municipal management of urban highway connectors. Saskatchewan 16 cities control urban highway connectors within their boundaries under provincial legislation and jurisdiction. These connectors are roadways connecting highways through the city. The Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure is requesting expression of interest that will identify priorities in each city for urban highway connector improvements. Any funding under the UHCP will be driven by the provincial budget process and compete with Ministry of Highway priorities. The city of Weyburn has identified the rebuild of intersection of 16th Street and First Avenue, which is Highway 13th, within the city as a priority for the UHCP. The condition of this intersection is very poor and will be included in our 2022 capital plan. The heavy trucks and required stopping by all vehicles has created significant redding. The plan would be to excavate down to the subgrade and rebuild the road with a stronger base to handle the heavy truck traffic. And I just have a map showing exactly where that is. In order to move the expression of interest, the government of Saskatchewan requires a resolution stating city council agrees to meet legislative standards to meet the terms and conditions of the UHCP program, to conduct an open tendering process, to manage the construction of the project, to fund the municipal share of the project, to fund ongoing operation and maintenance costs, and to follow any mitigation measures as required by the Federal Impact Assessment Act and the Environmental Assessment Act. It is a recommendation that city council provide the province of Saskatchewan with the required resolution for the UHCP expression of interest.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that Weyburn City Council provide the province of Saskatchewan with the required resolution for the UHCP expression of interest.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Hearing none?
Yes, your worship. This isn't new, that the highway connecting program, usually when you want something, they don't have any money to help us out, and Government Road a few years ago was a good example of that. So, I don't think we're, are we breaking new ground here, Jennifer? Are we just agreeing with what they're proposing to us?
So, they, they do an intake every year, and so right now, it's an expression of interest so that when they go to do the provincial budget, they know what kind of projects the municipal, the municipalities are looking for, for funding. So, this is our way of saying, this is a priority of Weyburn, this is how much we would be looking for in the urban highway, from the Urban Highway Connector Program, so that they can budget for 2022, 2023 projects. And this is a way of giving them an idea of what, of what our priorities are and what kind of funding they will need.
Okay, the question to you then, do we have to match this funding, the same as the CAP program for the airport?
So, this one specifically where we've applied, so in certain cases with, with highways, they, they have what is a Level 1, a Level 2, and a Level 3. This area is a Level 3, so they will provide 70% of the funding for this. We would be required to provide 30% of it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? This is an important part because that intersection is terrible, so, yes, we'll move forward on that one. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Now, we have a discretionary use development permit for a community recreation facility on 744 McClellan Street, so if we could, if you would, Janine?
So, we've received a discretionary use development permit application for the development of a community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan Street. And the site is currently zoned R1, residential detached, and both the community recreation facility and nursery school are considered discretionary uses in that zone. The subject property is on McClellan Street, just south of Fifth Avenue North. The applicant is proposing to change the use of the building from a dance school to a community recreation facility and nursery school, and I've included the aerial imagery of where it's located there, as well as the zoning map, and the site plan for what they're proposing. So, it includes that rectangle to the north there is their outdoor play area that they're proposing, as well as seven parking stalls, including a barrier-free parking space, which meets the requirements of the zoning by law. And I've included their floor plans that they're proposing as well. These are used to calculate how much, how many kids they can have and what play area they have under the zoning by law, and whether they meet the requirements, which they do in this case. So, a neighborhood notice was required because it's a discretionary use, and they were So, a neighborhood notice was required because it's a discretionary use, and they were sent out to all property owners within a 75 meter radius of the subject property, and it notifies them of the application and the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedback to council. These notices were sent on July 6th, and concerns that have been received are attached in the council package. They included parking and traffic, as well as some noise complaints as well. So, the official community plan, uh, the property is designated residential in the OCP, and the following policies are applicable, um, which include that there's calls for complete community, communities where residents can live, work, and play. The requirement that care homes and daycare centers can be facilitated in compatible areas of the city, um, and that the primary use of land within residential areas will be residential, however complimentary institutional and community uses are also permitted, for example, schools, daycares, and other commercial activities. So, the zoning bylaw, the R1 zone, is designated to provide for the development of predominantly single detached dwellings with some compatible uses such as schools, daycares, nursery schools, and religious institutions, also as permitted or discretionary in that zone. The proposal is for a community recreation facility and associated nursery school to be developed within the existing building. Uh, it was previously used for a dance school. The building is approximately 1,900 square feet on the main floor with a basement. Both community recreation facility and nursery school are discretionary uses in the R1 zone. Section 4.5 of the bylaw regulates daycare centers and nursery schools. The intent of these regulations are to ensure compatibility between the provision of daycare and nursery services, and intended to encourage dispersion of those services throughout the city, um, so that they are available at convenient locations. The following are applicable to this application. There are regulations around how much indoor play space has to be provided, depending on how many, uh, children are cared for, and, uh, they have provided that, um, with approximately two, two, uh, twen, two, 2,072 square feet, um, which is more than enough space to accommodate the approximately 25 children, uh, that they may have at this facility at one time. And then the outdoor play space standard is a minimum of seven square meters, uh, with a fence, uh, with a minimum height of 1.5, or 1.2 meters. The applicant is proposing an outdoor play space of about 198 square meters, which is sufficient to accommodate 28 children. Uh, the development is required to have seven parking spaces, including one barrier-free, and there are currently seven parking spaces proposed, so the site meets the parking requirements. So, council's options would be to approve the development permit, uh, for a community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan without further conditions. Option number two would be to approve the permit, uh, subject to the following conditions. A minimum of seven off-street parking spaces shall be provided on site in accordance with section 4.6 of the zoning bylaw. Parking areas must be maintained as a dust-free, gravelled, or hard-surfaced area. The development shall comply with section 4.5 of the zoning bylaw for indoor and outdoor play space standards. Building permits shall be required. Public health and fire department inspections and approval shall be required prior to operations, and they shall comply with all the provincial acts and regulations regarding childcare facilities. Or option number three would be to refuse the development permit, um, and the officer making the motion would have to provide the reasons for refusal, uh, in their motion. So, the staff recommendation would be that the development permit meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of parking and nursery school regulations, and the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, staff are recommending option number two, to approve the discretionary use with the conditions listed.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship. I move that council approved development permit 2021-021 for a community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan Street, subject to the following conditions. A minimum of seven off-street parking spaces shall be provided for the community recreation facility slash nursing school in accordance with section 4.6 of zoning bylaw 2020-3412. Parking spaces must be maintained as dust-free, gravelled, or hard-surfaced area. The development shall comply with section 4.5 of the zoning bylaw for indoor and outdoor play space standards. A building permit shall be required. Public health and fire department inspection shall, excuse me, be required prior to operations, and the owner shall comply with all provincial acts and regulations regarding childcare facilities.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that. Your Worship.
Discussion? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, Your Worship. Unfortunately, The Family Place is a victim of your own success, so that's what's created some of the, some of the concerns, right, brought up about parking and traffic and all of that. So, I'll start off by saying, uh, I love the organization, and we're grateful to have you in our community, so thank you for that. So, a few questions that, that have been posed to me, some of which I had a hard time answering, so I'll pose them either to you, Janine, or to you folks, if you're able to answer that. So, there's seven parking spaces that are there. Those are off the back alley, correct? So, who uses those seven spaces? Is that staff parking, proposed, that would be staff parking?
So, in the back of the, um, property, we will be planning an addition where there will be a preschool, um, drop-off area back there, so it will be families using that. There is room for more parking. We did just propose that in our proposal to get the zoning approved, however, we do have to create more parking, and we have ample room for that. So, it will be parents dropping off for a 10-minute time slot. It'll be dropping their child off and leaving, so it won't be parking all day. It's kind of a drop-off zone.
Okay, good. Thanks for that. So, further to that, you might as well, yeah, Janine's not going to be able to answer these. So, I'm kind of, I'm going back a few years to my chamber days, um, when you guys first moved into the building that you're in now, or not first moved in, but when there was a lot of development happening down there, and we took a bit of, um, there was some controversy around town just about the congestion in that area, particularly in the, in the city-owned parking lot that's kind of across the street from you. So, do you find, like, do you have, this is an unfair question, and it's hard to know, but could you give an estimate, how many cars come and go from your place in a day?
In the morning, we have, um, max of 24 children in our morning program, so there is 24 families that do drop off between 8:45 and 9:00 AM. So, it's a very quick time span. However, it's not safe where we are on Fourth Street, too. It's very busy. So, we are looking for a quieter location to house our programming, what we do at The Family Place. And then at noon is a busier time. That's when those children get picked up, and then another set of children get picked, dropped off for the afternoon.
Yeah.
So, there is four busy times, but they're really 10-minute increments.
So, so generally speaking, though, folks don't, I mean, yeah, the youngsters spend a great deal of time, but mom and dad don't spend a great deal of time at your place?
Not in the preschool part of the family center, but in the hub of The Family Place, we do have a family, uh, program, and also a play space where families do come and spend time.
Right.
An hour at a time, and it's maybe eight to 10 at a time. So, there's, I feel there would be lots of parking for, to accommodate everything that we offer at The Family Place.
Okay.
Couple more questions, if I might?
Thanks. What are the, what would be the, the hours of operation, generally speaking?
Thank you for that question, because The Family Place feels very confident that our hours of operation would be very accommodating to that neighboring, uh, community. We run Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 3:30, so for the working class, they wouldn't even know we're there and gone. The evenings, there's zero traffic. We have one board meeting a month, and that would be the only time there would be any evening activity at that property. So, 8:30 to 3:30 is the busiest time, and the most the community's going to hear in that area is children laughing and playing in our outdoor space. I think it'll be a nice cheery, um, accommodations for the neighboring people to hear, and we're very respectful as a staff, and I feel like we would keep the grounds neat and tidy, and I think it'd be a great asset to be in a quieter location for The Family Place in this community.
Good, thanks. One more, if I might, then, to city staff. Have the police or engineering, uh, been, have you guys been consulted about the impact of traffic, the speed limits, to, uh, enforce, traffic enforcement, any of that, have any of those conversations happened?
Uh, yeah, so.
Thank you, Dawn, by the way. Thank you.
So, Janine and I actually went out and assessed the site, um, to look at it. So, this is your residential area. It is a 40 kilometer an hour zone as based by our general speed limit. Part of this area will see, um, towards the end of it, as you come onto Douglas, we'll see a 30 zone because you will be entering the actual school zone there. Um, we have looked at the parking situation, um, and a lot of it is with the, across the street, there is, um, the fire hydrant and parking to the, um, as you get closer to Fifth, there is not room for parking there, but that is all covered by the traffic bylaw. So, a lot of the parking issues that were brought up, it would become more of an enforcement issue, and I have spoken to, to Jamie about that, and we are aware of kind of the issues in the area and what would need to be done for enforcement. But a lot of the issues that, um, were brought up are more, they're already covered in the traffic bylaw. People should be abiding by them. It just might be more of a targeted enforcement in that area to say, like, look, no, you can't park by the fire hydrant, you can't park to the intersection, and you can't park blocking anybody's driveway, but I mean, that's standard across the city.
And Dawn, you communicate with your users as well, right, where, please don't do this, or please, you'd help out with that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Your Worship.
Mr. Van Beter? Is that Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Richards. I think you've covered most of the questions, and I think a lot of the concerns, you know, if possibly there's enforcement before with, with the dance zone there, and, uh, just going by the numbers, I would say you're going to have a third of the amount of traffic that the dance zone had, and the hours that you're going to be there, the dance zone was, I think, 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock at night in your hours or during the day. So, I think a lot of the concerns that the citizens have will be alleviated with just the different times and fewer people and better enforcement, and that's maybe a little bit on the city for not having as good of enforcement before. But, uh, no, I, I fully support this.
Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, Worship. I want to make it very clear, Your Worship, that especially through The Family Place, the comments I'm going to make are not against The Family Place. You are a great organization in this city. What I'm struggling with is the safety of the people in that area, in a residential area, a school in a residential area. When the dance studio got permission from us and council, I was here at the time, there wasn't things that were happening over there, like a development of the Legacy Park, the Spark Center, or the new hospital. That wasn't there. The Cinnaboya Park School was. There was a little bit of, uh, dissension from the neighborhood, but not like I'm hearing today, because things have changed. McClellan Street is going to be, and I'll say quite honestly, very active in different times of the day, coming and going, because of what's going to happen at Legacy Park School. And the safety of everybody in this city is a major concern of mine. I, I'm concerned about the people that live in that residential area. They were concerned a few years ago, and now it's being more, more aggressive because of what is happening in that area. What, what you stated tonight, I totally respect that. Your vision is, is great, however, there's going to be so much traffic coming out of that area, in that special area, it's, it's, again, uh, safety is a big issue in my mind. I have trouble supporting it at that location, and again, I want to emphasize, no disrespect to The Family Place, it's just that location.
Mr. Jenkin?
I've got one question about the, I guess about the green space right next door. Uh, is it your intention to be entirely indoors, or on nice days, would you allow children outside and that kind of stuff, simply because it's not fenced off and it's exposed to Fifth Avenue? See where I'm going?
Yes, we would have to create a fenced-in green space area. Our plan would be to have the children outside playing as much as possible, as well as utilizing the indoor space, too, but we believe outdoor play is very important, and that would be all facilitated. It wouldn't be families out there on their own. It's all facilitated with our staff that would take the children out there for a facilitated playtime.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Yes, one of the things, the only thing that I will say about it is that, as communities develop, they change, and, uh, and it's unfortunate that as residential, you buy in a residential area, but then the use of, of some of the commercial buildings start changing, they move forward, so, that's just the way, the nature of a growing city. The other one that, though, is that, Janine, there were some signs, and I guess that goes to you, too, uh, there, Jennifer, that the one, uh, person asked to have some of the signs, different signs, uh, placed out there. Can we accommodate some of those signs, like the limited idling signs, the, what were some of the other signs that they, they had talked about? There's, um, that she had shown in parking, and that, yeah. And, and again, I would feel that that would be one of the things that I would like to see added to the recommendations, a part of it, that we get these signs. I guess it doesn't, uh, put, it's not up to them to, to comply, but I'd say, put it back to the engineering department, saying that we have really good signage, as well as there's going to be around the school, that's really good signage, so then people can't be surprised if they get a ticket for failing to comply. Jennifer?
Uh, yeah, we, I can do an assessment along with consulting with the, the police department kind of on that area. In some of the cases, it, it's not a signage thing, I mean, it's at every intersection, so you're not going to put that you can't park within so many meters of a fire hydrant. You can't, like, signs like that just don't go up, because you can't do that anywhere near a fire hydrant. It's a standard part of the bylaw. So, we'd have to assess to make sure the signs are appropriate, um, they fit with the area, and then they fit with kind of our city standard of what we do. So, I, I can't commit to what signs we would put up there, but we can do an assessment of the area to look at it.
To put up more signage and such, to make sure that people are aware. That's, that's all that I'd ask. As far as, as moving forward, that, yes, I think The Family Place has grown, has grown. You need an outdoor space for the children, and I'll support on this one, that we go forward.
Thank you, Worship. Um, I just want to say, as a mom of two kids who actually used The Family Place not that long ago, crossing the street on Fourth, it, it could be dangerous, especially if you're trying to hold on to a toddler and a car seat. So, I think, uh, quieter neighborhood facility would be much more beneficial. Um, I took a look out there today, I walked around the property, and I think it's a great location, so I think, uh, Counselor Mickle, your safety factor is answered there by not having so many little kids in the downtown area, having to cross streets to get to the facility.
Anything else? Nope? So, moving forward, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed, all in favor, passed unanimously. And the start date, your projected start date of moving in, when, Dawn?
Um, would be a year or two, actually. We're planning a fundraising project to do an expansion out the back, so until we do that, we won't be moving in there.
Okay, and, but you've got the property secured if this was passed there?
Yeah.
And that'll be a year from now?
Correct.
Okay. And then a lot of things can change within the year, so. All right, good, thank you. The next one, up, is a home occupation application, if you would, please.
An application has been received from Jonathan Ebel to operate a personal service establishment, uh, known as a hair salon or barber out of their residence, uh, 219 Government Road Northwest. Um, it's located in the mixed-use zone, and the business is proposed to operate between 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM, seven days a week. Um, this would be considered a controversial use, as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimal anticipated, uh, increase to traffic flow, uh, he expects a few cars per day. Uh, parking on the driveway is available. The applicant is proposing to, uh, conduct their business on the rear porch of the dwelling. Um, so home-based businesses are permitted in the mixed-use zone in existing residential dwellings, uh, but they're generally deemed controversial when customers or clients are attending the home. Uh, this requires public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on July 6th to all neighbors within, uh, 50-meter radius of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections have been received. Um, so, home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that land, landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based occupations generally must meet the following provisions. Be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence. Be compatible with residential uses. Be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients. Not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. The use is identif, uh, the use is identified as a controversial occup, uh, occupation under section 5.1.19 of the zoning bylaw, as clients will be directed to the home. The applicant has operated their business out of their previous home, um, and a new application is required, uh, to ensure. and a new application is required to ensure compliance. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home occupation application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw and therefore recommending option number one to council. So option number one would be that council approves home-based business permit 2021.007 at 219 Government Road Northwest, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. Shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross habitable floor area. Face of any home business sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients and a business license shall be obtained prior to occupation. Option number two would be the refusal of the home-based business permit for the following reasons and those reasons would have to be provided tonight.
Do you have a motion, please?
Worship, on the motion, the council approves-
Do you want to put your-
The council approves home-based business permit 2021.007 at 219 Government Road Northwest, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The home occupation shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross habitable floor area. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients and city of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to operation of home occupation.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Yes.
If I may. Thanks, your worship. Well, Janine, it's your turn. Amanda got out of this one, so I'll ask the questions. Or you'll answer them, sorry. There are always three on here that I struggle. I'm, first off, would like to say awesome, that the entrepreneurial spirit continues to flourish in our community. So I wish this individual all the success in the world. The onus now is on us as, as a city to ensure that everything remains as it should. The three that I struggle with, I don't know how we do this or regularly, how regularly we do it. Only the resident of the home can work in there. How do we police that?
I'm not sure if we've ever had a problem. I think that would come into play if you saw an increase in traffic and you had to find the root of where that's coming from or if there was a parking problem on the site. I'm not sure if we've ever had to do enforcement on that, so.
Okay. I just want to plant the seed. Also, the same I always have with this, the signage. I see them around town. I think largely they fall into the parameters. But do we, do we pull that business license registrar occasionally and go and do a bit of checking to make sure that, that they are setback, that they are only a square foot in size? I don't know that we, I'm not looking for an answer from you. I know you don't know the answer. I'm just asking that hopefully we do engage in that process.
Could if we had to, yeah.
And then I do assume that you and/or Amanda do take into account the 25% of the floor use. You probably do that through, through, through a development permit, correct?
Generally, they're required to submit a floor plan, which we can verify the 25%, but-
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you. Inquiries and announcements, anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So as everybody knew, the Waverne Agricultural Society held their 112th. And it's supposed to be annual fair, but you know, with COVID, we had to take that year off. I am the rep for the egg society or from the city that sits on the egg society. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all Waverne residents who came out and enjoyed four days of fun. Even though it was hot, it was a fantastic time. I want to thank the egg society members who get out there and volunteer. I know a lot of them take vacation from their regular jobs, so thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And to the groups that help with the gates. It's not just the egg society. They just don't have enough members to man those gates for 12 and, you know, 14 hours a day. So the Humane Society and there's a whole bunch of other organizations who brought their volunteers out to help out with the egg society. So I really appreciate everybody and all of the hard work that went into that.
Mr. Van Bitchel?
I would like to echo what Councilor Morris said. I went last, the first night with my granddaughter who outlasted me. And I just want to say kudos to the egg society for sticking their neck out and taking a chance to put that event on. I felt very, very proud as a citizen of Waverne. And the amount of people that were there and as Laura said, the people in those booths that were sweating and take, you know, and they were so polite even though the temperature was 30, 33 degrees. And again, I just, kudos to the egg society and everybody that volunteered.
Comments? Anything else? Anything else? Our next council meeting will be?
Monday, August 16th, your worship.
Right. And then we will, after that, we will be back into our regular council sessions. Summer's over. Summer's moving along very quickly. We still have, we have lots of stuff. Jennifer and her staff is doing lots of projects throughout the city. You'll see that there, we've got, a lot of trees fell through the winds. Hopefully we won't get any more of these winds. Hopefully we'll get rain and to bring along and things will continue on. Lastly, there's no set date yet for the opening of the Sparks, the Spark Center, is there yet?
I know, your worship. So at last council meeting, there's a presentation done by Director of Leadership Services, Andrew Crowe. So they have not set a date yet. They will announce that once they do have a date for that opening.
Right. And I realize that there was a, that was talked about at the last council meeting, but I just wanted to know if there's any update yet because people again are getting anxious about that. The school will be open though for this fall?
School will be opened up on September 3rd.
September 3rd and we'll follow up there. Because I'd heard some rumors again of different people and, you know, the rumors go of when the Spark Center was going to have their opening, but I'm going, I have not heard anything official yet. Go ahead.
I know, your worship. Once we do have a date, we'll make sure that everyone in the public knows and make sure there's a, a big announcement for that opening. So we will have that here in the near future.
And one last thing. Waverne Builds, there's lots of, I've seen lots of people out doing renovations on their houses outside. We have the Waverne Builds program. There was someone just here lately who was talking about it. They're doing it. They still, some people still are unaware of that, but that program is out there giving out money towards outside renovations of your house. So take advantage of that. Come in and see the staff at Waverne City Hall. Anything else? Nothing else moving along? And with that, there's no notice of motions and I will therefore call an adjournment to the meeting. Thank you.